Welcome, Council. Welcome, Council and staff and ladies and gentlemen who joined us on YouTube. I'm going to do with the Committee of the Hall meeting. Any words of recognition? I'd like to congratulate Council Jeff for a number of years' service. I believe it's forty years, Council Jeff, and maybe you can tell us in a quick minute what all was.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I received my forty-year volunteer pin from the province. Every year, they recognize the volunteers. They do it in decades. And this year, it was done virtually online, but we usually get together. And it's amazing when you get the number of people in the hall, like they say, you're close to six hundred years of volunteerism in the group of people. So, yeah, it was quite nice to receive the award and be recognized. So I enjoy volunteering in my community.
Congratulations, Council Jeff. I'll go to the clerk to identify any items to add or delete. Madam, sir?
This afternoon, we did receive a deferred request regarding Committee of the Hall Agenda item CW53, which is the Woodington Lake Management Project. And what the Woodington Lakes Management Incorporated has requested through their solicitor is that council defer this report for at least forty days to permit further public consultation. So should council wish to defer this item, now would be an appropriate time to pass that resolution. It is a council's discretion whether or not you do want to defer this item. Pending no deferral, we will go forward as scheduled with the report that's published on the agenda. Thank you, worship.
Madam, sir, I know. Madam clerk, I know there are several people have signed up to speak on it. Have they been cautioned before we go ahead?
Yes, thank you, your worship. When staff were made aware of this deferral request, we did reach out to not only members of council, but also to those that have registered as a deputation to inform them that the deferral could be an option that council may exercise at the request of the developer. And subject to the deferral, their deputations would also be deferred to a later date.
Counselor Noi?
Thank you, your worship. At this time, I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we defer this application. It's only fair to the applicants that we defer. I guess they wanted to bring back something in forty days, and it's only fair to the applicant. So I'll put the motion on the floor that we defer this application. And I have a second. Give a second, or...
Is there a second, or Counsel Lacy?
Thank you, worship. I'll second the motion. I think it's prudent that they wanted to involve the public more and discuss, I think, this item with the public a lot more, which I approve of. I think public input is very important for this either way. The forty days, though, I think it might be more prudent just to have it brought back by staff so that we're not stuck on a time limit. Is that okay?
No, not if we were referring. It's up to them that they want to, how many days or weeks or months our staff can tell them.
But no, they would contact staff and say that that's when they were ready.
Yeah, you're quite correct. That's right.
Yeah, okay.
Counselor Harrison McIntyre?
Thank you, worship. I'm just going to recuse myself in this conversation as I have a potential conflict as the development site is directly adjacent to my property, and therefore it's a potential pecuniary interest.
Well noted. Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor Mill. I don't agree with the deferral. I think it should be here tonight. There's all kinds of people that want to speak in favor and opposed to it. And so I think it's a two-sided coin. It's obligations. We have to take both sides of things, and to me, it shows bad disregard at the eleventh hour to dismiss all the people that are here for a deputation. So I'd be opposed to the deferral.
Thank you. Counselor Jeff?
Your worship, are we amending the motion to take that forty days out, that the staff will bring it forward whenever it's ready to come? Okay.
Counselor Sainsbury?
Thank you, your worship. Just if it does not carry, what are next steps? Like, what happens?
Well, we have a motion prepared. If this motion gets turned down, to go ahead with it tonight.
But they're not, are they present? Are the people that have asked through their lawyer for the deferral, is their lawyer present to speak? Because that's what happened last time. Nobody showed up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm going to call the motion. All in favor? Oppose?
Your worship, can you repeat the motion, please?
Certainly. Actually, I'll go right to the clerk.
Worship, the motion is that report CW53, Woodington Lake Management Incorporated, requests for minister zoning order be deferred.
Forty days.
Counselor Beatty, okay. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor? Oppose? Motion's carried. Five to four. The motion that the Agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting held on March 29, 2021 be confirmed. Moving second. Counselor Norcross? And Counselor Jim. All in favor? At this time, if anyone has a pecuniary interest, you can call it now. When the item comes up. I'll go to clerk to identify items for separate discussion and the reasons thereof.
Thank you, worship. Items requiring direction: CW32, Aliston Business Improvement Association sign variance request. There's a deputation. Item CW41, a bylaw to amend business licensing regulation by law 2008-119 to regulate pet stores. There's a deputation, and we also require direction from council in closed session. Item number CW52, site plan agreement D112039, Queen Tottenham Incorporated Commercial Restaurant, 23 Queen Street North. We have a deputation. Item CW53, oh, sorry, that one was deferred. And that is it. Oh, it wasn't deferred, sorry. Woodington Lake. No, it was deferred. Okay. And that is the summary, your worship.
Thank you, madam clerk. We're having problems tonight with the system here. All right, sorry. I'll go to council to identify items for separate discussion. Counselor Noi?
Thank you, your worship. CW32, I think it's already been deferred. And I heard Pamela say about CW53, that's being deferred. Am I correct?
No. I see, yes, been deferred.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks, your worship. CW51, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lacy.
Thank you, worship. I'd like to speak to CW32. CW43. I think 51 was pulled. Am I correct?
Yes, what?
CW52.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Jeff?
Thank you, your worship. CW22.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll go to clerk to summarize all items, identify for separate discussion.
Clarification from Counselor Lacy. Was it item CW21 that you wanted pulled?
No, it was CW32. 43. 51 and 52.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so items to be pulled, your worship, requiring further direction. CW22, Accessibility Advisory Committee Summary Report, dated March 17, 2021. CW32, Aliston Business Improvement Association sign variance request. There's a deputation. CW41, bylaw to amend business licensing regulation by law 2008-119 to regulate pet stores. There's a deputation, and we also require direction from council in closed session. Item CW43, Council Renumeration and Expenses 2020. Item CW51, sale of water to the township of Essa from the Aliston Collingwood Pipeline Amending Water Supply Agreement. Item CW52, Site Plan Agreement D112039, Queen Tottenham Incorporated Commercial Restaurant, 23 Queen Street North. There's a deputation. And I believe that concludes the summary, your worship.
Thank you. I'll move to second. All items not identified for separate discussion be received in the recommendation there and be recommended council adoption. Moving second, move back, Counsel Foster, second by Counsel Noa. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. First item is CW22, and Counsel Jeff?
Thank you, your worship. This was a great meeting. We discussed several things that have just kind of been out there in the community. We did years ago talk about the chat service, and we found out that they have improved the taxi service through the chats, and it is available to residents eighteen if they require a wheelchair service plus their caregiver. So I would encourage everyone to check out chats. They serve us New Tecumseh and Bradford, West Bullenberry. And if you qualify, you get at a discounted rate. So it was kind of nice to hear about the chat service and looking forward to working with them in the future. I'll make the motion that we accept the report.
And second by Counselor McClellan, that the Accessibility Advisory Committee Summary Report, dated March 17, 2021, be received. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. CW3, and we have a deputation, and it's pulled by Counsel Lacy. Did you, Counsel Lacy, did you wish to have the deputation go first?
Yes, please. I believe Counsel Noi also pulled it.
Thank you. All right, we'll invite Mike Carey, President of the Aliston BIA. Mr. Carey, sorry, hi, Mike.
Good evening, your worship. Deputy Mayor Norcross, counselors, town executives. Thanks for this opportunity to present on behalf of our ABIA Board of Directors, our ABIA membership with regards to this project that has been on our radar for a number of years. That's finally coming to fruition. And I'm here to support what I was led to believe was Mr. Bishop's presentation on the variance this evening and to make myself available for any questions or concerns with regards to this project. It does fall in line with our strategic plan that we operate under as far as Board of Directors, derived from the Brooks Study that all of council is certainly aware of. Our downtowns, as everyone is aware, is struggling immensely currently, and our focus is on the sustainability, the vitality of our downtown, our merchants, our retailers, our service organizations. For those of you that are aware, we've had a number of businesses close, and I've never seen so many properties up for sale that are at this particular moment. So there is some urgency on behalf of our Board of Directors to support and increase awareness for our membership for their sustainability, not only for themselves, their businesses, their employees, but the families that we support within the town. I do wish to acknowledge, excuse me, I do wish to acknowledge our general manager, Linda Spur, and our dedicated and tremendous Board of Directors that I would stack up against any board that I sit on, whether it's private, public, or volunteer, as being second to none. And then thanking them for their support and persistence as we worked on this sign issue for the past number of years, as Counsel Beatty is aware of. So again, this project follows our strategic plan. It mirrors the success of our farmer's market, our outdoor patio program that we funded, our Wi-Fi initiatives downtown. So again, just to follow up, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Bishop, is the fact that this is a BIA and ABIA, sorry, funded project, and it mirrors what our neighbors to the north in the township of Essa and Angus have done, as well as the communities of Shelburne, Dundalk, and Grand Valley. So it's under the auspices, if these wonderful communities can do it, so can we. So with that, I'll turn it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Do you want, did you wish to comment on the motion?
Through to you, Mr. Mayor. I did not have a presentation prepared per se. I was ready to answer any questions that might come from council on the recommendations of the report.
Good. Thank you. We'll go to council, and I believe first one was Counsel Lacy, Counsel Noi, and then Counsel Foster.
Thank you, worship. Just a few questions, if you might. This appears to be a gateway sign as we're coming into Aliston, and I thought we kind of had a standard for our gateway signs. It doesn't seem to follow the sort of standards that we have as a town for our gateway signs. Is there any reason why it's changing from that? That might be two, I guess.
And Mr. Bishop?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Lacy. That was one of the pieces of commentary that was received after doing the circulation internally, was that from staff's perspective, there was a desire to follow council's direction of presenting that unified town visual identity and following the visual identity of the, pardon me, the visual identity and signage strategy that the municipality has in place. I would know that that is likely something that would be dealt with through the agreement that's referenced in the report as opposed to the variances that are being sought through this report in order to take that next step to the agreement phase.
Thank you. Anything else, Counsel Lacy?
Not right now. I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Noi?
Thanks, your worship. Thanks, Mike, for the short presentation. Appreciate that, and it's been a long time coming. So my question is, I've mentioned this before, is fiberglass pole at the west end of town, and also there's a telephone pole there. So whose responsibility is to remove them, since we're not using them? I have no idea. So will they be removed?
Mr. Jerry?
Yes, thanks, Counsel Noi, for the question. The ABIA owns those poles, and it is our intention, once this sign gets approved, since we're paying for the sign, that we will take down those poles on the west end. The east end will remain as it's part of our urban strategy, the east end being that of rural, and then the west end with the electronic sign will be the urban part of it. So the pledge that I made to the CAO a number of years ago was that we will honor that. We will take down the poles at the ABIA's expense.
Thank you. Counsel Foster?
Thank you, Mayor Mill. This is a question to both Mr. Bishop and Mr. Jerry. I saw all the paperwork that went back and forth between both sides, and the only thing that I noticed, I noticed the word showstopper on the reply back from the ABIA to Mr. Bishop, and that was in regards to the content on the actual messaging boards. So I wonder if, Mr. Jerry, you can speak to why that's a showstopper and what exactly the town is looking for. First of all, your position related to that, and then the second part to that question would be, has there been any follow-up to eliminate the showstopper position, whether you've come to a workable agreement?
Thank you. Mike, did you want to go?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. Through to the counselor. If I may, I'll answer the second part first. The last correspondence that we've had back with Mr. Bishop was on Monday the previous week, a week ago. We replied to the working document, as we term it, with regards to our concerns, our view, our board's view, our membership's view is, we're paying for the sign and for the greater good for the downtown, for our members, and for the town of New Tecumseh as a whole, that we would permit. Let me take a step back. We're following the Angus BIA, the Township of Essa model, where the members are paying for the sign. We have worked out the fact that they can produce an advertising or marketing of their logo, of their business name, of their address or website. In conjunction with that, we would support the promotion of town events that benefit the town as a whole that do not in any way conflict with our members that are paying for this sign and that the ABIA would operate the sign and the message based on a criteria that we work out with Mr. Bishop. And hopefully that answers your question. So if this was, sorry, let me just step back. So if this was not permitted, if our members were not allowed to market their logo, their address, their website, that would be the showstopper.
Counsel Foster?
Thank you, supplementary. So it was really a two-part question. It was to Mr. Bishop and Mr. Jerry, because we're being asked tonight to approve this, and I guess it's a question back to Mr. Jerry for one. If that's a showstopper, and that's not been resolved, then we're putting the cart before the horse. But at the same token, I don't think anybody wants to see this delayed further. So I guess what I'm looking for is, maybe to Mr. Bishop or to Mr. Jerry, or collectively, how do we get past the showstopper? How do we get this approved, and how do we get the sign in the ground so that another year doesn't pass before it happens? I guess that's ultimately what I'm looking at.
I'll go to Mr. Jerry.
If I can jump in, we use the term showstopper. We're just following the model that the Township of Essa and the Angus BIA follow, so it's a proven recipe for success. And it's already being done by a competitive neighbor of ours. And we just want to compete fairly and give our organizations a chance.
A supplementary, Counsel Foster?
Yeah, actually, thanks, Mr. Jerry. Mr. Bishop, if you can jump in here and and I'm just curious, if no one's talked about the position, and yet we're asked to support something, you understand the concern here, so I'm just looking to see if we can't have a path forward.
Mr. Bishop?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Foster. Absolutely, there's a path forward here. I think similar to the piece around the design question from Counselor Lacy, that aspect will be dealt with through the agreement phase of the project. In terms of the variances that are being requested tonight to move to that next phase, I don't believe that piece necessarily impacts it. I don't have the correspondence in front of me right now, but I believe there is a reference to, perhaps there is a misunderstanding of the intent of the, whether it be the submission or the comments back from town staff to the ABIA that can, from my perspective, can be resolved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bishop. Mr. Jerry?
Yep, we've, with regards to our intention is to put up the sign and to work this out. I can certainly appreciate where the counselor is coming from. Our design, if we can fit in the town's flavor, let's say, of design for the costs that we've been quoted, that we've budgeted, we run one real tight operation. There's no contingencies on our proposals or RFPs with regards to these projects. But if we can fit in this change in the design, we absolutely will. If not, then we will be coming, we'll have to work out something with the town for the cost difference. But hopefully we'll come to that.
Counsel Lacy?
Thank you, worship. Sort of two questions. The first one, I think, to Mr. Jerry, and it's related to the advertising you were talking about. If, say, for instance, you were allowing the BIA members to advertise on that, would you only be utilizing the members of the BIA that are in within your catchment? What about people outside? And I guess the second part of that question would be, would it sort of be a free service, or would they be a paid service towards this?
If I may, it's a free service to our members, our membership. They're the ones that are paying for the sign. So it'd be for them, and specifically for them, for the greater good of the town. If there's a town event, you know, and we heard earlier about the COVID, the vaccine clinics, the dates and the times, and the toll-free number, it's for the greater good. If it specifically competes with our downtown merchants, we would not be allowing that or permitting that.
Okay. Anyone else? Counsel Beatty?
Thanks, your worship. If there are no other questions from members of council, I think just to cap it off, what we're passing tonight in committee is the agreement in principle. And one of the things that'll come forward is a subsequent agreement that will work out things like design and some of the other issues that have come up. My question through to Darcy is, are you anticipating having the subsequent agreement back in front of council as of the next meeting, or do you require more time than that?
Fair to Counselor Beatty. That would be my hope. I do need to touch base with our solicitor tomorrow morning just to firm up how we're going to move that process forward. They are aware that we're looking, they obviously draft this type of agreements for use of municipal property. So there is background to work from. So, you know, as we, I'll touch base with them, assuming we do move forward today as soon as tomorrow morning to get that process started with the intent of being in a position to move it along as quickly as possible.
Thanks, Darcy. Your worship, with that in mind, I would suggest that we pass the... Your worship, with that in mind, I would suggest that we pass this tonight and in principle, and get the agreement working, and then come back to council with the actual agreement. So we can go over the specifics. And if members have questions or comments with, uh, related to those issues, we can address them at that time and make a decision. But, uh, in the meantime, we can move forward. And, uh, I'm happy to help as long as, uh, as well as, uh, members of the ABIA to work on the agreement between now and the next meeting. So, uh, Darcy, if, if I can be of assistance, and, uh, I'm sure Linda and Mike and anybody else on the board, we'd be happy to meet between now and the next meeting. Just, uh, let us know your availability, and we'll get the agreement in place and get it in front of council that, so we can get moving forward on this project with construction season upon us. I think we can all agree that anything is better than what's there now. And, uh, we definitely need to make an improvement, and now's the time certainly to do it. So I would just hope that we, uh, can move this forward tonight from committee to council and come back with the specifics and have those, uh, questions and answers, um, taking care of that. Thanks.
Yeah, look for a mover and a second. That, uh, that the report of E D twenty twenty-one oh three be received. I'm sure that the deputation of Mike Jerry, Alston Business Improvement Area be received. I'm sure that a signed variance proposal from the Alston Business Improvement Association to permit electronic message board ground sign in the municipal right of way immediately north of the vacant commercial property of one seven-three Young Street, between the property lines and the existing municipal sidewalk, be approved, subject to the execution of the agreement between the town and the A B, A B I A to allow for use of municipal property for sign. I'm sure that the items related to the design, maintaining installation and operating criteria of the sign as outlined in reports, be addressed through the required agreement. And for that, the A B I A, we were requested to remove the concrete poles located east of Eighth Avenue on Young Street in conjunction with the installation of electronic message board sign. I'm sure that the fees associated with the variance request and required grim be waived. Move by Counselor Noah, second by Counselor Beatty, all in favor? Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Jerry.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Uh, next one is, uh, C W four-three, and Counselor Lacy.
Um, thank you, Worship. Uh, okay, I just wanted to make sure I knew which one it was. Um, through you to, I guess, our Director of Finance, I just wanted to clarify that all council members are either receiving benefits or cash in lieu of benefits.
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Lacy, I believe you're, you're referring to a different report. Are you referring to Council Reeneration four point four?
Council Reeneration, yes.
Okay. Um, so just to clarify that, yes, um, counselors either receive, uh, benefits or benefits in lieu, depending on their circumstances. That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, move by Counselor Lacy, second by Deputy Mayor, that report in twenty twenty-one dash zero sixty received, all in favor? Kerry? Is that in camera? Excuse me. Thank you, Counsel. Retention. C W four-one? We have, uh, Patrick Harrington? Patrick, good evening.
Good evening. So for the benefit of, uh, Mayor and members of council, my name is Patrick Harrington. I'm a lawyer with Erdham Brilis. On this particular matter, my client is Pets Friend Inc. Uh, they operate out of forty-four Victoria Street East in Alston. Uh, it's a new business. It's been in the town, uh, since about the beginning of the year. By all firsthand accounts, it's been a successful installation. It's been welcomed by both the business community and some of the local residents who have done business at, uh, at Pets Friend. You will have on file a letter, uh, from the principal of my client, which was filed with the town in association with the March first Committee of the Whole Meeting, wherein the members of this council received a deputation from the representatives of the local Humane Society, and then resolved to direct staff to prepare a pet shop licensing bylaw. That resolution included various directions on the contents of the proposed by, pet shop licensing bylaw, including restrictions on where pet shops can obtain, uh, the animals that they would put up for adoption or sale. Um, also included in that particular resolution was a proposed prohibition on selling animals until the enactment of the bylaw. That last, uh, part of the resolution was later walked back as part of the March fifteenth, um, meeting of the Committee of the Whole. Instead, that was replaced with a direction that the, uh, pet shop licensing bylaw be brought to this committee of the whole meeting, but also with a direction that the bylaw be not only presented to the Committee of the Whole, but also that a special ca, meeting of council be convened that same evening to approve the bylaw. And it's that process that my March twenty-fourth letter to council was intended to address. And so for those who had had the opportunity to review the bylaw, what I'm reviewing in that letter is when a municipal council decides to regulate or prohibit the operations of a lawful business, there is an obligation at that time on council to understand the effects that their regulations or prohibitions will have on the business they're, uh, imposing them upon. And on that point, what the case law says is that it's not good enough for council to look around and see what other municipalities happen to be doing on a particular subject matter, and just decide, we should be doing that too. The obligation is that the specific council engage with, for example, the businesses that are being regulated, so that the council fully understands the impact of what they're about to do on those businesses, and makes an informed decision when it decides to vote on the new licensing bylaw. And in my letter, and I'd actually written an article on this a number of years ago, we called it the council's due diligence requirement. And the effect of not undertaking the appropriate due diligence on a regulatory bylaw, such as a licensing or business licensing bylaw, is that the bylaw may be open to be quashed by the courts as having been enacted in bad faith or for a collateral purpose. So if you look at some of the hallmarks of due diligence and looking at the process that council undertook to get to tonight's meeting with respect to this pet licensing bylaw, you had the deputation from the local Humane Society only, uh, less than a month ago. Based on that deputation, there was an immediate direction to draft a bylaw and also a direction to outlaw the sale of animals at pet stores. You didn't follow through with the immediate outlaw, but you directed that it be brought forward for consideration and approval at the same meeting. And the staff report that attaches the draft bylaw that's before you this evening, that was only made available at the end of last week. So that those who are, uh, to be impacted by the bylaw have effectively had one business day to review the impacts of a business's licensing bylaw that effectively could put them out of business. So which is why I had said in my original letter that the process that council is walking down with respect to this bylaw has the hallmarks of the lack of due diligence that could lead to this type of bylaw being quashed. Now, fortunately, in my submission, there's still an opportunity to get that, this right. But it is going to require that council pump the brakes on this pet shop licensing bylaw this evening. The first part of my request for your consideration this evening is that you direct that this bylaw be brought back at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, which I believe is at April twenty-six. And it can be earmarked for passage at that particular meeting, based on the feedback you get from now till then. Second, I'd also ask you to consider redirecting staff to have formal consultations with those pet shop operators who will be directly affected by this bylaw. In particular, my client, who has told me they haven't been contacted by staff directly. You have a written submission from my client that was, uh, submitted to you a bit way back when the original deputation was heard, but there's been no follow-up discussion with her about her business, the way she manages it, and all of the other ways that this pet shop bylaw will impact the, the way she conducts business. So what we're asking for is a one-month kind of deferral of this process, so that we can review the actual bylaw that you're going to pass and provide feedback to council before it actually gets enacted. And that would, in my submission, satisfy the due diligence requirement that comes with these types of business licensing bylaw. And to give you examples of the type of things that could be brought up in a consul, a formal consultation, I have two suggested particular amendments that could be brought forward for staff consideration. First, there is the lone requirement that is the most problematic in this bylaw, which is the, the restriction on where pet stores are allowed to source their pets. In our submission, this could be revised to include the additional permission to source pets from reputable breeders. And on this point, the list of permitted, um, resources could include those breeders and kennel operators that already have a license to operate from the town of the relevant municipal authority. This suggestion would ensure the protection of the animals, which is the, the beating heart of this whole initiative.
Yeah, one minute, Mr. Harrington, one minute.
It would also help to promote licensed breeders and borders, and would also help to cut off the stream of unlicensed puppy mill operators, which again is the target of the bylaw. Another suggestion would be to include temporary grandfathering for the bylaw. And this is to address the fact that lawful pet stores that have legal obligations, such as store leases and breeder contracts that will be directly impacted by the new licensing regime. There has not been a licensing regime of this nature that has been brought into effect by municipal authority that didn't have that type of grandfathering. And it has ranged all the way from one year in Richmond Hill out to five years for the city of Ottawa. And that's to allow lawful businesses to make their bed and allow for the, the transition into the new regime. The good news is, my client doesn't take issue with any of the other regulations to be imposed on these stores. They're very concerned with the issue of where these animals can be sourced. We believe there is a lawful and better way to draft this bylaw to make everyone happy that it's going to achieve its objective, but not put small businesses out of work. We'd ask you to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions to Mr. Harrington? And Counselor? Uh, Deputy Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Worship. Uh, through you to Mr. Harrington. Uh, you've made numerous references, uh, that your client has been waiting for us to contact them. Um, may I respectfully ask why they haven't been reaching out to us or to staff to, to engage discussion, please?
Okay, Harrington?
Well, as indicated, there was the initial submission. It was that they got about a page or two that was drafted by the principal of Pets Friends to outline all the ways in which their business attempts to comply with all the regulations that have now found their way into the draft bylaw. But when it came to drafting the actual bylaw, the actual contents, things like the amount of space to be allocated to animals, the amount of time that we checked in on veterinarian, the types of certificates, things like that, there was no opportunity for input for that drafting exercise. And that's the part that we'd like to have the opportunity to discuss it with the, uh, with staff before it gets presented and voted on by council.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Anyone else in council? Uh, Counselor Foster?
Mayor Mill, through you to the deputy. You made a reference to, um, the two provisions that your client would like to see. And I believe you said the restriction to allow for licensed reputable breeders. I, I don't, um, know for a fact that the Canadian Kettle Club, which is, is, um, considers itself one of the governing bodies, has a specific statement right in its by, right in its, in its bylaws that state, oh, I'm sorry, I should have it in front of me here, but there's a number of things that, um, they're not allowed to do, that are not allowed to auction or raffle off. I'm going from memory on the call. So can you expand on what you refer to as reputable breeders? And what sort of, who would these reputable breeders be in, in yours or your client's opinion? And do they come under any registered affiliate of any organization that we might recognize and do some research on?
Mr. Harrington?
Certainly, I'm familiar with the Canadian Kettle Club, and their guidelines specify that these types of animals, puppies in particular, are not to be made privates as a raffles, and they're not to be sold to pet stores, um, to prevent these, to discourage these breeders from, uh, you know, supplying irreparable, uh, sellers. And certainly, we're familiar, all familiar with Kijiji ads and other online resources where people are able to access these types of animals for private sale. My client deals directly with a series of breeders and has direct legal relationships with them, where she has to come onsite and inspect their, uh, kennel and their breeding before she will accept, uh, the opportunity to bring the animals through her shop and to, uh, introduce them to potential adopters, who she also meets with in advance to make sure that she's pairing the right animal up with the right family. There are certain health guarantees and certain adoption guarantees that come with her particular, uh, mode of business. So in my submission, that type of mode of business is not the type that these types of bylaws are intended to end. In fact, these are the types of business that these bylaws should be encouraging to get people off of the web, off of these one-off sellers who use burner phones in order to just sell puppies out of mills. But reputable go-betweens that these pet stores can become. And certainly, there are, uh, animals that aren't, don't find their way into shelters or find their way into rescues, and breeders who don't want to have, uh, the obligation of selling directly to the public, that operators like my clients can fulfill that, that, uh, that role in addition to providing pet supplies and other information that might be of use to the public. So it's some work at trying to allow for that type of inclusion into this bylaw is what we're hoping to achieve. It's not something that I think can be drafted on the fly. My attempted introducing a potential amendment to say that if it's a breeder that's already licensed by the municipal authority, then it's probably somebody who's trustworthy in supplying a store. So if the store also has the license to carry on and, and help with the sale of the, these, um, the, these bred puppies and, and kittens and other animals, then we've actually ensured that the supply chain is what we want it to be and not what we don't want it to be. But it does require a little bit more, more work to try to craft out that exemption. And that's what I'm hoping to have the opportunity to do, if council would allow for more time.
Okay. Uh, supplementary, Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. I'm, I'm just trying to drill down on, on, on the term reputable breeders, and, and what's the basis for saying reputable? Is there an organization that's attached to them? Is your particular client specialty skilled? Is she a veterinarian? I'm just looking more to what the attachment reputable is and how you define that, to give it, to give, to give us an understanding.
Mr. Harrington?
My initial foray into defining what a reputable breeder might be for a by like, the, bylaw like this would be a breeder that's already licensed by the municipal authority. And municipal authorities have the ability to license breeders and kennels through the municipal act, and some municipalities do. I did try, uh, in my own way, online research to find the town of New Tecumseh's licensing bylaw to see if you were already doing it. I wasn't able to find it before this evening's meeting. But it's certainly something that happens in other municipalities where you license breeders, you license kennel operators, to make sure that somebody who is carrying on business lawfully in the town is the only one who's supplying those. And somebody who doesn't have that type of license would be an illegal supplier to a pet store, which is the type of person you're trying to cut out of the supply chain. Those, that would be your puppy mill or somebody who's going along those lines. Uh, as for the kennel club's position or one of the other breeding authorities, that's probably out of my depth. That would be something that's probably more appropriate for my client. But the reason you're speaking to the lawyer tonight and not the client is because the bylaw is on the table to be approved tonight. At another meeting where the bylaw is not on the table for approval right away, it would probably be better to have my client to come and speak to the way she did, has been dealing with veterinarians who come into her store on a regular basis to assess the puppies, the types of health certificates that go out with them whenever they're adopted, uh, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Counselor Jeff?
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, just to comment that, yes, on page three, it was saying that, uh, through the code of practice for its member breeders states that no breeder shall sell or donate dogs for the pur, purpose of their being auction raffled or to pet stores. Um, so possibly a pet store could be an adoption, uh, center between kennels and like this, the Canadian Kennel Club and pet stores. So, uh, I was just read that, that I saw that. So, uh, Counselor Foster had already touched on it. So it could basically be that the store would be the go-between for adopting or selling.
Thank you. Any other questions to Mr. Harrington? Mr. Harrington, we will go in camera now to discuss this with our solicitor. So thanks very much for your participation.
Thank you, Your Worship.